I'll call the meeting to order. Lack of those in attendance to know that we have one remorseful person in our audience this morning. Ms. Bell, Ms. Karen Bell, is celebrating her 50th birthday. It's not, it is not a good day thus far, and I can assure her, it will not be a good day for the rest of the day. I also like to welcome, uh, Ms. Virginia Conger here. She's in her, her mess, wife of former mayor Bob Conger. Thank you, Virginia, for being here. We'll call the September 2nd, 2014 meeting of the Jackson City Council to order. And we'll ask Councilman Harvey Buchanan to lead us in our invocation and pledge. If you would, please stand.
Good morning. Let us bow as we render a word of prayer to our Lord and Savior. This morning, God, our heavenly Father, as we petitioned our throne of grace, we come as humbly as we know how, thanking you for the many blessings that you have so richly bestowed upon us. Father, thank you for all that you've done in our lives. Thank you for all that you're doing, and thank you for all that you're gonna do. Father, we have sinned, and we pray that you forgive us of our many sins. Father, as we get ready for the city council meeting, we ask that you grant the city council, the mayor, wisdom, courage, knowledge, and conviction to do what is right and benefit the entire city of Jackson, Tennessee. Father, if we get too high, bring us down. If we get too low, bring us up. If we get too far apart, draw us closer together. We need you in our city and in our lives. Pray, Father, for everyone, all residents. Pray, Father, that the ones who have been doing the killings and the shootings would cease and desist, and let them know that that's the wrong thing to do to settle differences. Teach us, Father, each and every day. We need thee in our lives. Be forever grateful to you and give you the praise and the glory. The honor's already yours. In Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every king and justice for all.
Need I actually think you can show all council members present? It's for the roll call. Item four, disapproval of the minutes of the August 5th, 2014 city council meeting. Council has received a copy of those minutes. If there are no objections or corrections, and if no objection from the council, we'll go ahead and accept those minutes as, as distributed. Item five is the invitation public comment. Is anyone here who would like to be heard by the council on any item under new business? If you would make it known at that time, I'll be happy to call on you. We have no proclamations this morning. Item seven, dispersed readings. Consideration of ordinance to close an abandoned unnamed alley between Holly Street and Clayton Street just south of Carroll Street. Stan, morning.
Good morning, Mayor and council.
Morning.
You have the materials pertinent to this abandonment and closure in your packet. This is our continuing effort to abandon these alleys that are unimproved, that aren't used for access, and, and in this case, this is one that, that it really, you wouldn't know it was an alley if you were to look at it. So, we're asking you to, to abandon this alley.
Move for approval. Have a motion for approval. Before I take a second list, this is ordinance on first reading. Let me conduct a public meeting. If there's anyone here who would like to be heard on this particular matter, either in support of or in opposition to, if we'd make it known at this time. Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll take a second.
So moved.
We have a second. Any discussion from council? Council, please vote.
Okay, I have a question.
Okay, sorry.
Um, all right, um, is, does, do houses back up to this alley? I know I'm familiar with this, but I can't think right now if houses back up to it.
Uh, this particular alley, yes, it runs along the backs of these lots, and it's just basically grass. Like, again, you wouldn't know it was an alley if, unless someone told you.
Okay. Um, and, let's see, I had another question about it, give a second. Um, okay, all right. No, no more questions.
Okay, any other questions or comments from council? We have a motion and a second. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Item two, under first readings, consideration of ordinance to close an abandoned unnamed alley running south off of Arlington Avenue between Campbell Street and Pleasant Street.
Again, you have the materials pertinent to this abandonment, and again, it's very similar to the one you just approved. It's unimproved, it's not used for access, and we're asking you to abandon it.
Move the approval.
Second.
A motion for approval and a second. Any discussion from council? Uh, go ahead.
I've got one question on that one, Stan. On the, on the little piece there in the center where it looks like we do have an alley?
Yes.
Uh, does that still stay with the city, or how does that give you that between the property owners?
The part that, that runs into this one that's being closed?
Yes.
Is that the one you're talking about?
Yes.
Uh, that one would remain open. Uh, I assume, I haven't got the map, you know, the aerial in front of me, but I assume since it's not abandoned, it's used for access for, you know, one of those properties.
Okay, my, my question is, normally when we abandon an alley, the property gets deeded back to the property owners side by side? We've got that little strip there that's got, doesn't have a property owner on the west side, I guess that is, uh, east side. I don't know which way your map's oriented.
It would, it would just become a, the end of that, the one that's already still open.
Okay. Does, would property taxes go up on any of them?
Well, I guess the little fraction of a, a bit of acreage that they would, you know, that they would gain, it might adjust their property tax. I wouldn't know for sure, because we, we don't do that.
Falls under the assessors office, I think. Let's conduct the public hearing on this particular ordinance on the first reading. If there are anyone present who'd like to be heard on this ordinance, either in opposition to or support of. Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and we have a motion and a second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Item eight, under second readings, we have consideration of certified tax rate ordinance for 2014, be the FY 2015 budget, and I think council approved that on first reading with lowering the tax rate.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion from council? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Item nine, new business. Consideration of resolution to memorialize Isaiah W. Savage, Jr. by designating Monroe Street in its entirety as Isaiah W. Savage, Jr. Boulevard. Councilman, now.
Thank you, Mayor. Today's a great day for the Savage family. His grandson, Elam, is that right?
Um.
Okay, I'll make sure I got your name right. He approached me because he wanted to make sure his grandfather get opportunity to be, to get this great honor because of what his grandfather did in our community. Mr. Savage was a person that had a great character and stood up for what was right in our community, when no one else had the heart to do it. And I think this would be a great opportunity to honor him. I'd like to ask the Savage family to come up, please. And I know his wife is here, if she could at least stand, and I know she probably don't want to come up, at least she should stand.
Just come on up and have a seat.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Byron Elam, and I'm the proud great-grandson of Isaiah Savage. I'm accompanied here today by his widow, my great-grandmother, Mrs. Margaret Savage, and his youngest daughter, Mrs. Candy Savage Campbell. We, the Savage family, sincerely ask that Monroe Street here in Jackson be honorably renamed in honor of our family patriarch, Isaiah W. Savage, Jr. The reason that we propose Monroe Street to be named in his honors, because our family home is on the corner of Monroe Street and South Royal Street. Our family has lived there for nearly 50 years. Isaiah Savage had a very distinguished tenure and track record of service and accomplishments here in Jackson, Tennessee. He was a graduate of both Mary High School and Lane College. He was a World War II and Korean War veteran and reached the rank of captain. Once he returned from the Army, he opened Savage's Grill, once a popular eatery here in Jackson. Savage's Grill received national attention in 1956, when the head of a Dr. Pepper Bottling Company had publicly supported a suit that would keep state funds from colleges and universities that integrated. In response, Isaiah Savage boycotted all products from this particular bottler. Mr. Savage's actions inspired other African-American merchants in the area to do the same. His courage and heroism regarding this particular issue was covered and featured in the Jet Magazine in February of 1956. Mr. Savage's efforts inspired other, other actions in the area of civil rights in the Jackson, Tennessee community. Mr. Savage remained active within the local civil rights movement and was a charter member of the NAACP chapter here in Jackson, Madison County. Isaiah Savage taught auto mechanics for more than 30 years at the old Mary High School and at Jackson Central Mary High School. He was the first African-American field representative for U.S. Congressman Ed Jones, Democrat from Tennessee, and was very active in the local Democratic Party. He was the first African-American chairman of the Board of the Jackson Housing Authority, the first African-American to serve on the Board of Trustees of the Jackson, Madison County General Hospital, and the first African-American to serve as president of the Jackson Education Association. He also served as commander of American Legion Post 31. Mr. Savage served as treasurer of the West Tennessee Health Improvement Association Board, and he served on the boards of the Jackson Boys and Girls Club and the Southwest Tennessee Development District. In 1979, he was appointed by then-Governor Lamar Alexander to serve on the statewide Tennessee Health Coordinating Council. He served as a trustee, deacon, and Sunday school teacher at Berean Baptist Church and chairman of its budget committee. Isaiah Savage received a certificate of merit from Lane College in the area of business and the number-one citizen achievement award from the local Omega Psi Phi chapter, of which he was an active member. Posthumously, Mr. Savage has been awarded the Lane Trailblazer Award and the Lane, and the Lane College Award, and the Pioneer Entrepreneur Award from the Jackson, Madison County African-American Chamber of Commerce. Isaiah Savage passed away on March 10th, 1981, after very lengthy illness at 60 years of age. We, the Savage family, pray that in this small way, we can honor someone who gave his entire life to the uplifting of this great community. He spent his entire life here in Jackson assisting citizens in every way that he could. His personal mantra was, "If I can help somebody, my living shall not be in vain." And certainly, his living was not in vain. Thank you.
Good morning, I'd be here, give the voices to the council. I'm Gabe Savage Campbell, I'm the daughter of Isaiah Savage. Let me say this, Mayor, my dad shaped a lot of people's lives. I want to say this, Mr. Harvey Buchanan, you are a great product-
...of your father. You're also a great product of my dad, because as a little girl, you would come by our house, and daddy would tell you, "So Harvey, everything is gonna be all right, you're gonna be a great leader." He helped and shaped and motivated your life. And this morning, I am so glad to see our former First Lady of Madison County, Ms. Virginia Conger, and I want to say salute to, um, Councilman Conger. You are the spit image of your grandfather, who I love very dearly, and he loved me very dearly as a little girl. And I'm also gonna say, uh, I'm, I'm very happy this morning to say that I'm saluting my councilman Johnny Dodd. Johnny and I go back a long way. We grew up as kids over here in, over in the rural area, and I'm glad to see that the Lord has allowed you to sit in that position. I'm gonna salute you this morning. And I'm also saying to you, I am very happy that you took on this project, and my nephew here initiated, and with the families together, we're here to speak on Ed's behalf. But I also want to say to you, uh, City Council, this morning, during the 70s and the child change in Jackson, Madison County, Congress, the late Congressman Ed Jones needed a diverse group of people to lead the areas of the counties of Tennessee. And he led my dad to be the first field representative of the area. And daddy helped everybody. I said that our house is by the side of the road, many people know the Savage family, 550 South Royal, if you needed something, daddy was there. Many nights, my dad would go to bed, the phone would ring at 2:00, 3:00, or 4:00 in the morning, and I always asked, "Mama, why is the phone ringing at 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning?" Because there was someone that was in need of help. My dad would get up out of bed, and he would help those people needed help, especially where someone's son had gotten in trouble, and he was getting out the bed to help those people. But outside of that, let me share the changes of Madison County that under leadership of my dad and, and the late, great Mayor Conger. In the 70s here, Mayor Conger needed a diverse group to lead Jackson. And at that time, there was no African-American that sat at the board at the Jackson General Hospital. So, in the late 70s, Mayor Conger appointed my dad to be the first African-American board member that would help to bring about changes with the medical industry here in Jackson. As you all know, East Jackson Medical Center, which is located on Lexington Street, is in, in dedicated his memory, and the other two Black and African-Americans that sit, which is Shirley Mercer and Harvey Spa. Also, I would like to bring out the point that in 2008, the African-American Chamber of Commerce here did a recognition of Black businesses. Many of you might not know, but my dad was entrepreneur. We had the Savage Grill here. And the Savage Grill was a eatery here in Madison County from the early 50s to the late 73, when daddy took the position to serve with Congressman Jones. Many of you might have heard of Jesse Owens, who was well-known athlete. They, my dad served him, and you might know Laverne Baker, who was a popular star in the late 50s here in our eatery. But to say the least, we are very happy this morning, and quoting from the Jackson Sun, that many accolades were given to my dad, but I'm gonna share something with you. Many of you did not know that in the late 60s, early 50s, Dr. Walter Harrison and Ariel Peady, those were my dad's good friends, they served on many committees here in Jackson to make it better what, we're a great city now. And because of their vision and working, you're great, I'm gonna say heads off to you as well. But under, um, the administration of our dad, we wanted to say that Savage family is very grateful. We hope that you will see the need of renaming the street in my dad's honor, because he meant so much to you. And I know he loved you, Harvey, and I know Ernest Brooks, your dad was also a product of my dad, he loved your dad. He, I, I know he's smiling on you for the great work he's doing in Madison County. But I want to say thank you for taking the time to allow my nephew, myself, this is our mother, Margaret Savage, I don't know if she wants to say anything or not, I'm gonna let her have the floor, if she'd like to speak.
Thank you. Mayor, here's the City Commission, thank you profoundly, thank you, thank you, thank you. I cannot add any more to what they have said. I am just happy to know that you have given consideration to my late husband, Isaiah Webster Savage. Thank you.
Thank all of you, and, Miss Savage, you can be well assured that we're a better people for having known your husband, and we're a better city for him having served it, and we appreciate y'all being here, being a part of this. And I'm going to ask for a motion for approval from Councilman Dodd.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Before you make the motion, I would be remiss, before you ask for the motion, I would be remiss if I didn't make a comment, if not, Miss Savage will whip me. To the Savage family, Isaiah Chief Savage was one of our mentors. We affectionately called him Chief. I didn't know his first name was Isaiah for a long time, all I knew was Chief. Through my auto mechanics years and classes at Jackson Central Mary, he would not let me cut up. As I became an adult, he said, "We're gonna leave the scene." And somebody got to lead the people African-American section of Jackson. He said, "I see something in you, boy." He said, "You got to do something, and you got to lead." He put a lot of pressure on me, and I didn't know what he was talking about. But as I got older and started seeing things that were going on, I said, "That's what Chief was talking about." I think it's something about the name change today, the proposed name change to Isaiah Savage, Jr. Boulevard, and the connection to Austin Mary Boulevard. Chief taught at Jackson Central Mary, Mary High, and then Jackson Central Mary for 30 years. So they're gonna connect together, Austin Mary Boulevard, it's a council seat fit, and Isaiah Savage Boulevard. Thank you so much, and candid, I didn't know you remember all that, you little girl here. Thank you.
No, I was watching, he did.
Okay, Councilman Dodd, is there a motion for approval or resolution?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion from council? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous?
Thank you all so much for being here. Thank you for your presence here. Also, under new business, item two, is consideration of resolution to rescind the commitment to deed five acres, more or less, to Connection Preparatory School. And I think we have some people here. I know we have, um, Ms. Owens here and Patterson here. If y'all would like to come up and just kinda indicate to council where you are and, and what you'd like for the council to consider. Is Manola here? Yeah, there she is. Come on up here.
Good morning.
If y'all would just introduce yourself to council.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Helen Owens, and I serve as chairperson of the Board of Trustees for Connection Preparatory Academy, which is a proposed charter school for the city of Jackson. I'd like to share with you where I am in this process. I don't know what's going on. I have not had any discussion with anybody regarding this, so it puts me at a disadvantage. I heard from someone who stopped me in the street and said, "What's going on? Why are they taking your land away from you?" And I didn't know what they were talking about. And, and then that kept proceeding. Uh, I, I went to see Stan Pilot, who didn't know what was going on. Uh, I finally wrote a letter to the mayor, and I C.C.D. to everybody that I thought might have been involved, to include Mr. Dodd and CRA representative, I'd heard that name. I still received no conversation regarding this process. I think, if I may, Mr. Mayor, when we do a charter school, and I want to say upfront that when we have attended conferences that have to do with charter schools, one of the things that they say to us is, "Be honest and have integrity with the people that you are pursuing the charter school with," and we have tried to do that, and we've tried to be open and honest in, in, in doing this process. And I guess I'm concerned, because this process has moved this far, with nobody saying anything to us. We had applied in 2011 for a charter school, and I believe the record will show that on the, in, in April of 2011, you voted as a body to allow the deeding to be done to charter Preparatory Academy for the school. It's understood, I think, in the charter academy, charter school area, that a charter school is not going to be built overnight. You know, you cannot go to a bank, you cannot go to other places and ask for specific resources until you've been approved. I believe the record will show that we applied in 2011, we were turned down by the city of, by the school board, and the state upheld their refusal. We went back to the table, and we started the process again. When the new superintendent came into town, we went to her and told her our plans. She said, "I'm going to be rolling out a few new ideas. I wish you would hold off, so that they don't be distracting to what I'm trying to do." Because we want to see the school system do well, and it's not our intent at all to do anything that would, that would negate anything that the school system is doing, we agreed to do that, to hold off for a year. It is our plan, uh, the process will start again January 1. It is our plan to start that process again, the application process, and move forward. Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'd like to ask that this matter be tabled, because there has been no conversation, and if, if, if we're voting on it, I'm not sure it's fair to the members of the board, nor to your council, to make a vote on something that has, this process has been done this way.
Sure, Ms. Owens. Ms. Patterson, would you?
My name is Manola Patterson, and I have the title of CEO. Right now, I'm wearing many hats. But I agree with Ms. Owens that we probably need to have a conversation about this before you vote, so we would like to ask respectfully that you would table this until we can have those conversations.
Okay, before we accept the motion, we do have Ms. Patty Pickler here from the Southwest HRA, who kinda coordinates the construction of, of homes for ownership. Paige, would you mind coming up and just kinda informing the council as to at least the tentative plans for what you have, what you have planned for that, that acreage?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, earlier this year, we come to you with a plan, uh, along with the CRA, to develop a corridor down White Hall. There was some discussion about the availability of the property and the timeline. The money would be better spent if there is a cluster of properties put together instead of just one house here and one house there. It was decided by the CRA and all that. It would be better if we could cluster the project. So they brought this property to our attention, and, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The CRA, the CRA did. And, um, we're just sitting and waiting on the decision as to whether, um, that would be released or to move on to another project. But we would build five houses initially on the property. We would sell to low to moderate income families. We would give them a soft second mortgage of $10,000. We are intending to pre-qualify the buyers, depending on their loan, to help them assist us in making decisions on finishes and what their loan would let them put into the new homes. In turn, when we sell the house, we take the proceeds, and we reinvest it into those properties again. So theoretically, we feel like we could build eight to nine houses in that area.
Paige, could you tell us where you are in the, in the process as far as the funding, and who has to get, kinda in line to get that done?
I think Stan might be able to help me a little bit.
Stan's gonna come up?
Most of that is HUD money, am I correct? 108.
The money that will be used for construction is out of our Section 108 dollars, um, that are, is our HUD funding. We have to go through a, a special process because of using this, the Section 108 dollars, which is basically CBDG funds. Uh, it has to go through a organization that's a, that basically is, is able to take the money and use it for construction of houses, and we would work with the Jackson Housing Authority. They have a, an arm of them called Genesis, which meets the criteria that HUD sets for using CBDG funds for building homes. And we would go through them, they would manage the project, and Southwest would become sort of a contractor for them in building these houses.
Excuse me, Mayor, if I, if I may, I have a question for Stan while he's up there.
Yes, sir.
Stan, aren't both projects under the CRA?
Yes.
Both projects?
Are, in, in the Connections Charter School project under the CRA?
Yes, and, and again, let me just state that when we were looking at White Hall and looking at the lots, the acquisition cost along White Hall for the particular ones that we were looking at was driving the cost of that project up, because we were having to buy lots that had homes on it already, that were dilapidated, uh, there, there was demolition cost, there was asbestos mitigation, all the things that are associated with tearing down houses, so that you can create a, you know, a vacant lot that you can build on. So, um, our master developer for District 2- So our master developer for District Two brought up this property, the five acres that is between Phillips and Cartmail. And at the time, again, everything was discussed in relationship to if the property became available. And it was always understood that it was a commitment because the city council originally passed the commitment of the five acres to the charter school. And then the property was transferred to the CRA. The CRA owns the property.
Right, right.
And when they transferred it, they transferred it with the understanding that the CRA would also commit. And they did in the same month, in April '11, they committed to the five acres also. And when we were talking about this property, it was always under the context that that would have to be dealt with before the property could be used for construction. So I just want council to be aware that it was contingent on that happening.
Well, I mean, I guess I understand, kinda understand that part. But I guess my overall question is kind of the disconnect between Connections and what they understood and the new project. Because again, they're both under the CRA. That's what I...
Well, there wasn't a disconnect. Again, there was a discussion all along. There was discussion about that nothing had transpired with the Connections Preparatory School or the Charter School, and nothing was going forward. So the master developer asked about using that property. We looked at that property, and again, we said, "Well, it would, again, be contingent on the commitment of the five acres being released." And if it was released, then the five acres would come back because the CRA owned all nine acres. And we own five acres that's got the commitment on it, which is the southern end of that property. And we've got the four acres that's on the corner between Phillips and Cartmail that we still own. So again, the southern end was looked at because it's the area that's on the residential end of that property. The northern end was always looked at more as a commercial development piece of property. So that's why it was discussed. But again, there was no disconnect. It was always understood that they... One of them had a commitment on it that would have to be cleared before anything would go forward. And Patty will tell you that we did not move forward with this project because, again, all this had to be resolved before we could even consider developing the property. So that was always understanding. There was... Southwest was already in the process, looking at other pieces of property. So they didn't come into the picture going, "Okay, we're gonna develop between Phillips and Cartmail." They just want us to find them lots that they can build on.
Right, and that's not where I'm going with that. Maybe disconnect is the wrong word, but I think that's what Ms. Owens is saying, that being under the CRA, they've not communicated, seemingly.
When was I... When were we gonna know about it? As chairman of the board and as the CEO, when was somebody going to say to us, "We fixing to take you..." I don't believe, sir, that Procter &amp; Gamble... You would have gone into a piece of information like this with Procter &amp; Gamble. And somebody else comes along and says, "I want that land," and it's gonna... And you would just take it from Procter &amp; Gamble without saying anything to Procter &amp; Gamble. I don't believe the city does its business like that.
Now, Stan, what role do Garrett Taylor play?
He's a board member.
He's a board member.
Okay, now, from my understanding, then David emailed Gary about this property.
Gary is not chairman of the board, nor is he CEO. He's a board member.
I mean, I'm just saying, but I mean, because David talked to us and said that... Asked us about the property. And I think he said he had already talked to Gary.
Garrett can't give you permission.
But we didn't say Garrett was giving him permission. That's why we're here today. But I'm saying Gary was emailed and was told about what this process was gonna take place.
Why would not the chairman of the board and the CEO have done the same thing? Applied the same opportunity?
Like I'm saying, Gary was contacted by the developer.
By who?
David.
In all respect...
He's the master developer for...
Yeah, and I guess David and Danny have been talking.
In all respect, Mr. Taylor's not here today to defend himself. So we probably does not... We don't need to have that conversation. We just want to know why, you know, he went to a board member rather than CEO.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman. In light of what's going on with respect to communication, I move that this issue be tabled for thirty days, and we take it up at the next meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion from council?
I have one question. Stan, when we gave this property, did we give them a timeline? Did we give them a timeline? Because I agree with Ms. Owens, you know, that takes time to get a school together. Did we know we had a timeline in mind? I mean, did we decide, "It's been four years. That's long enough"? Were they aware of the timeline? Because I think they should have been.
Well, no, there was never a specific time stated in any case.
I have a question as well, if I...
Go ahead, Councilman.
Ms. Owens, could you just give us an idea of what the plan is? Where you all are in the process, and so that we understand fully.
Yes.
Because in the resolution states that whereas, and this is the second paragraph, third paragraph, I guess, whereas three years have passed and no significant progress has been made. And I'm sure you're here to say that that's not necessarily true.
That is not the case, yes.
Okay, could you just...
I think I mentioned earlier that we put off the application process last year at the request of the superintendent. That process will start again January 1.
What does that entail?
That entails submitting an application. In fact, we have what the state does require here that I can give you. There is a process that goes on through October when you make the application. And I can give you that, and you can have that. And that process is continuing at this time. We are developing the application. We are meeting. We're going to conferences on charter schools. We are meeting, in fact, we have a meeting in Memphis with a person who has been recommended to us, who has just opened a charter school that has received outstanding reviews. We have been in conversation with the Kip Schools of Memphis. So we have done a number of things in preparation for this. I think it perhaps should be said that when you're going to do a charter school, just as when you do it in a school, in 2003 or '04, I'm not sure, I was principal of Jackson Middle. That school was destroyed by, well, heavily damaged by tornado. We moved to Jackson State Community College to finish out the year. The next year, we spent in Highland Park, what was in Highland. It took about three years to get that process going or even starting to build Rose Hill. So it doesn't happen. You get the permission of the application, and you start that next month building a school. It doesn't happen like that. In fact, the state's process is that after you get your approval, you have a whole year to do your planning. And they will give you... Well, you may apply for a planning grant that you may use for the rest of that year to do your planning. Then the next year, usually, you enroll, and you're not ready to start building yet because you're not sure what your enrollment is going to be. So that process takes a little while. As everybody with whom we have spoken have said to us, it takes... It's not a process that takes one year or two years to get a school going, as public school people already know.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, on that motion to communication, if I need to make it plain between CRA and the charter school people, we want to make sure that all of the facts are out, and we be prepared to take a vote next month.
Who?
Is that a CRA? The property is in their hand, Stan. But before they commit one or the other, it still has to come back to council for approval?
Just like it did before. I mean, the council was the original body that passed the commitment. And they passed that commitment on to the CRA when the property was transferred. They said, "We want you to also commit to this," and that's what the CRA did. And again, every discussion that was made was contingent on this happening. If it didn't happen, then the project doesn't go anywhere. And the CRA doesn't act. They have to wait for this body to act before they can act. So the CRA wasn't pushing this train down the track.
Correct.
It was just understanding that there was a commitment, understanding that Southwest had a need, understanding that there was a process that they had to go through. And that's what we're doing.
All we're saying is the lack of communication between the charter school people and CRA. That's the reason the motion is made for the thirty day.
In my letter, they went forward.
Just a minute. The non-communication. And we... The thirty days after, we'll be prepared to vote after that.
Ms. Owens, Ms. Patterson, would it be possible for you all to perhaps maybe get on the agenda for the CRA and discuss your plans with them? I think they've already heard the plans from...
I still don't... I don't know who's asking... Who is doing the... And what it... I heard... I don't know who this person is. I just don't know anything. I don't know who's asking for the land and for what. I've heard there's gonna be some houses built. I got that from the street. I heard her say it this morning. I don't know who she represents. I just don't know anything.
Okay, the master developer for that district.
David Hunt.
David Hunt had asked the property be considered for housing, for new housing for that district, so...
I would probably ask David Hunt to do what we did when we were looking for land. We got with the city people, and we walked, and we looked, and we identified that piece of land, which had laid over there for about seven years. Nobody had done anything with it. We had, you know, perhaps that person needs to do, you know, do some looking around. I'm sure that's not the only piece of land that's available in East Jackson or wherever they are trying to build. I'm just not sure why we met with contractors, we met with realists. I mean, we just... We took great effort to locate the appropriate piece. And I haven't seen that piece, and after we identified it, then somebody comes along and says, "We want that one." I'm not sure that's fair.
Okay, we have a motion to table for thirty days, which will be coming up at the next meeting. Is there a second to that motion?
Second, I see.
We have a second. Any discussion from council? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you, Ms. Owens. Patterson, thank you, Patty. Item three is consideration of application for participation in after-school snack component. Eligible for that through Tennessee Child and Adult Care Food Program. Noes are approved.
Second.
We have a motion for approval and a second. Any discussion from council? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item four is consideration of contract for leasing computers.
We received four bids on leasing computers, seventy-five computers, for three years. And the lowest bid was to Dell. And that would be $428.41 per year per computer. So this is a three-year lease on seventy-five computers.
Move for approval?
Have a motion and a second?
One question, ma'am. What'd you say the amount for a computer was per year? I'm sorry.
$428.41.
Is that what it's expensive to us to lease them than it is to purchase them?
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
It's a little obsolete, so that way they rotate out. And we are able to find a fair market base. We give out at the end of the lease, seventy-five computers cost us about $5,000 million upgrade and one new software is in that house.
New technology.
Right.
Thank you.
I have a question, Susan. When we lease these computers, when we have a problem with them, does this company come and fix them, or does our technology department still fix them?
All of our issues are covered under the lease.
So that takes a lot off of the technology. They gonna still have a job now? That's the question. Okay.
So it's a good deal.
Okay, all right.
Okay, any other questions from council? We have a motion and a second for approval? Okay, council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item five, under new business, is consideration for contract for paving and lane improvements on Orwell Road and Country Club Lane.
We received two bids on this project, one from Ford and one from Delta. The lowest bid was from Delta Contracting, $472,733.25.
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
So moved.
We have a second. Discussion from council? Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item six is consideration of contract for Lambeth Boulevard roadway improvements.
We received two bids on this, one from Ford and one from Delta. Delta was low bid at $506,567.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item seven is consideration of contract for Christmasville Road widening.
Ford and Delta Contracting were the only two bidders for this project. Delta was low bid at $164,506.
Move for approval?
Question for approval and a second. Discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item eight is consideration of contract for Union Street improvements.
Ford and Delta were the only two bidding on this project as well. And Ford won this one for $100,797.3.
Move for approval? Second.
A motion and a second. Discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item nine is consideration of contract cancellation with Hinson Auction and Real Estate and award a contract to GovDales for the city's online surplus auction.
We've been monitoring, or the police department has been monitoring the auction sales from Hinson Auto for the past year and a half. And I guess for the first year, they really did a good job. But for the past six months, the city has not received the money that we were hoping that we would receive from the sales. And it is the recommendation of the police department and purchasing to rescind the contract we have with Hinson and award it back to GovDales whom we have had them in the past. With GovDales, it... The city pays no money at all. It's strictly internet-based, internet-based. And there's a buyer's fee, so we just received the money.
Is Mr. Hinson here?
I don't know. I don't guess he is.
Move to approve.
We have a motion for approval and a second. Any discussion from council?
Susan, when does... When would the contract have ended with Mr. Hinson?
In two years.
In two years, all right. I understand everything you're saying, and I agree with it. But I'm thinking from a legal standpoint, shouldn't we bid this back out?
We don't have to because GovDales is a sole source for an online auction that we know of. We don't know of anybody else who does it, like GovDales does that.
But there could be.
There could be, yes.
So if we vote yes to this, that means we have GovDales for two years with no bidding out for two years. Is that correct?
Well, actually, it would be a one-year contract with four one-year options to renew. So it would be a five-year contract.
So we wouldn't be finishing out that two years that Hinson had. It would just be giving GovDales one year, and then we'd look at it again?
I mean, whatever you would like for me to do, we have had really good luck with GovDales in the past.
We would just have the option to rebid it in a year if we wanted to, and we wouldn't have to.
That's absolutely correct, and that's...
And the last time we bid this out, those were the only two to bid.
That's right.
But we never know.
Maybe well... Maybe well to look at those numbers after a year. Mr. Hinson's had it for about a year, hadn't he, or a little bit longer? And to look at the revenue the city receives over the next year with GovDales and then make a decision at that point.
Another question on that, on the amount that you're saying that the city is getting west by doing locally, they're doing on GovDales. Do you have some numbers on that, or is that just their feelings? Or the last time we had listed numbers where it kinda showed the difference, and this time we did?
Tom Corley's here, and the police department ran some numbers, and he can tell you all about that.
While he's coming up, Mr. Hinson's original contract was for three years, right?
It was a... Was actually a one-year contract with, I think he had three or four options to renew. I'm not really sure.
Morning.
Good morning.
I apologize. You got to listen to me. Captain Lampley actually handles this process for us, and he's out today with his daughters having a medical procedure, so you're stuck with me. What Captain Lampley had provided me was he looked at the last seventeen months that Hinson Auction and Real Estate has been involved in the process, and then the previous seventeen months that GovDales was handling our auction. In the recent seventeen months with Mr. Hinson's Auction and Real Estate has been running it, we've totaled $86,210 for vehicle auctions and $21,511 for parking. we've totaled $86,210 for vehicle auctions and $21,511 for property, personal property auctions. The same amount of time, 17 months prior to that, Gov. Deals, we drew revenue $140,801 from vehicles and $54,235 from personal property auctions using the online auction process. So just those numbers for the same amount of time, Captain Lampley had done the numbers there, and it looks like we're reaping almost 50% more.
Is that the same number of vehicles that were sold though? Approximately?
Just the number, the amount of time, the number of months. I mean, sometimes we have more vehicles sold in an auction during a month, some months or less.
I'm talking about for that 17-month timeframe, where we did Gov. Deals sell 50 and Hinson sold 25.
No, that's pretty...I think it's a pretty close in number. I don't have that number. I have just the dollar amount and the fees that they charge and the profit and the difference in revenue. That's all he had provided for that time period.
Bottom line, though, 50% more for the 17 months. Okay, any other questions from council? We have a second. We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second. Discussion, council, please vote.
And the motion passes with seven members in favor, one abstaining, and one voting no.
Thank you. Item 10 is the some board appointments for the NED, the appointments of Jerry Gay and Wes Hendler.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion, a second, discussion. Council, please vote.
Vote unanimous.
And on the tree board, the reappointments of Nathan Carter and Charles Ball.
So moved. Second.
Motion, a second, discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item 11 is some budget amendments. Ms. Bell?
We have two budget amendments this month. The first one is for the Jackson Ballpark in the amount of $106,582. Requested to replace the roof of the Jackson Ballpark in the amount of $94,500. Add wood flooring to the ballpark. Officers' Club, $4,028. Replace batting practice cage, $4,500. And replace the spray rig for the playing field grounds, keeping the amount $3,554. This will be drawn on fund balance.
Motion approved. So, second.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion from council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
The second amendment that we have before you today is for the street resurfacing, as I shared with you at the agenda review meeting. This is for repairs to several roads that have had major culvert collapses, such as University Parkway, Ashport Road, and others that are being identified. There'll be a draw on fund balance in the amount of $960,000. And as I shared with you at the agenda review, we are talking with FEMA about hazard mitigation funds that are available. We had hoped that they would have been here last week, but I just received word this morning that they will hopefully be in town the week of September the 11th, and we'll know more about availability of those funds.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, second.
I have a question on that. Are we using some of the funds that we had borrowed from previous years that we'll be using next year, this year primarily?
Yeah, basically, because it's been a draw from fund balance, and unfortunately, the last...over the past month, some heavy, heavy rains has blown out much of our stormwater infrastructure. And let me just indicate to council, the $960,000 will be spent on a case-by-case basis. There's no bids indicating that that will be the total, and hopefully by end of the fiscal year that we will have gone on into that funding at a minimal level rather than a maximum level.
We're going to have to...I guess my point is, we're going to have to address our capital outages for next year because we're using this one this year.
We will, we will, for sure, yeah. Any other comments from council? There's a motion, a second. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Bell. Item 12 is consideration of invoices over $10,000.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, a second, discussion. Council, please vote.
The vote unanimous.
There being no further business, meeting is adjourned.